Good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, September 16th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could start as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its name, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. We have just come from executive session. We have not adjourned from executive session, so after this meeting, we will go back for just a little bit more business. If we could start with comments from the Board. Pete?
Sure. I have too much to say tonight. I just wanted to, being that this is the first Board meeting that we're having with the new school year underway, and in this school year, we're going to be talking about the new needs assessment and then eventually a new five-year strategy. I wanted to make everybody who's watching aware of a pretty good documentary that I saw that I shared with the rest of the Board, and I wanted to share with everybody. It's called "Most Likely to Succeed." It's a documentary that's featured now on, either we had it on YouTube or on iTunes Play Store that's available. You have to pay for it, unfortunately. It's not free. But really interesting documentary, and there's a companion book that goes along with it that I just read called "What School Could Be." I just wanted to put that out there for the community to take a look at. One of my objectives for running for this Board, I mentioned it early on, we had a debate back in the day, was that I wanted us to focus on challenging ourselves as a district to think more about how we could make our school district a little more progressive and a little bit more in line with what our kids are going to face when they're adults. So this documentary kind of speaks to that a little bit, so I wanted to put that out there and encourage people to watch it so that when we have these discussions along the way about the new five-year plan, we can kind of have that narrative in the discussion. So that's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you. Cynthia?
I don't know what else to say either. I just wanted to say, yes, it is the start of the school year. However, it doesn't feel that way because it seems like every week has been so short. So I guess kids enjoy it now, and next week will really be in the swing of things. And honestly, I can't wait and look forward to a good school year and things to come.
Thank you, Cynthia. Rob?
Good evening for those tuning in at home, for those that are in attendance tonight. Thanks for coming. Just welcome to everybody as we begin the new school year. Just a couple of thoughts. Steven Tagatti used to say this at the beginning of every school year, and it's just a reminder to everybody that there's a lot of activity around the schools now, so be mindful of safety with drop-off and pickup of the children. We have a lot of children now riding bikes to school. Some of them are even riding scooters. So just be aware if you're driving in the neighborhood that there are many children around and be mindful of that, either during the school hours or after-school hours, there's a lot of school after-school activities as well. Also, I'd like to mention, if everyone could just maybe tune in and really try and pay attention like they should every year. But this year is a big year because we have a lot of things on schedule with the Capital Project, with a new strategic plan or a new initiative to do a needs assessment. So I think it's important for everybody to remain engaged. It's in the best interest of our children and the community in light of all the happenings that will be on the schedule this year.
Thank you, Rob. I would like to also add to that about basically the enforcement of our traffic patterns, the dropping off and the picking up. And, you know, it's hard for me to report this, but the truth is that we actually, as parents, sometimes are the worst offenders. So really, we all need to work together to be diligent because it really is in the best interest and the safety of our students. You know, the rules are in place, and everybody really needs to abide by the rules and the patterns. And I know sometimes it's easiest to drop off in front of the school, and yet everyone's in a rush, but the drop-offs from middle school and high school are in the back of the school. We have a lot of our personnel and our staff outside trying to help enforce that, and it's really not where we want our staff to have to be, to be really reminding parents just to do what we have asked you to do in the first place. So please, it's, I know it takes a little more time. I know I've done it. I've done it for years. We've all, we're all parents here. We've all done it, and we know it's hard, and we know we are all at fault, you know, myself included. So please, if everyone could really just be more aware, give yourself a little more time, and really just follow the patterns. And actually, very fortunate to have Lieutenant Rosenberg, who is working, he's been here very often speaking with Carl, working on making things better and maybe making some changes, but we all need to be a little patient with that. But for right now, the way things are in place, if everyone could just follow, that would be very helpful. I did want to point out that tonight's agenda, you will see, there are a few changes, and if you're watching from home, you may realize that we have condensed things a little bit. We put this, I had suggested it at the last meeting, it's sort of a trial basis. We're going to see how it goes. If at home, you see that maybe you don't like it this way, or you feel like you would like to hear more information, please let us know. But please remember that all agendas are made public. You can access them on our school website. So everything is there. We just felt like we, as a Board, wanted to spend more time talking about what we're really all here to do, as Pete had mentioned, and to hear more from our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, about what the kids are doing, our curriculum, our academics, be more engaging at home and have the audience be more aware of that. There are things, it's important business, but we are, we are all have access to the agenda ahead of time, so we can ask any questions we have. If at home, you have any questions, please let us know. So tonight, you will see a little bit of a condensed version of the public agenda. I will also say that I have, and Lauren has, looked at many other school districts. We were the last ones to kind of change it. Everybody was already doing it this way. So we're going to try it, and we're going to see how that works. It just not, may not be what everyone is used to. I would also like to take a minute to introduce something that I had already introduced to the rest of the Board and to Carl, and that is, last year, we spoke often about trying to open up lines of communication with the Board of Education and the public. And we talked about it last year. We just had so much going on, quite honestly, with the bond, and most of our year was caught up in that. So we want to start again this year with another effort to try to open up the lines of communication with the public. Again, looking at other school districts, Lauren was also looking at other districts, and we found something that Rineck does, and many districts do different things. SCARSTIL does something where they engage with the public before their Board meetings. They invite different community groups. Pelham has a breakfast, you know, a coffee that they do once a month with the community. So different, you know, we're not the only Board who's trying to do this. So I just also wanted to put that out, but kind of like what Rineck was doing, and what they do is they have what they call Board of Education Office Hours. And what that means is that one hour prior to a plant, to one of our Board meetings, we haven't decided whether it would be our work session or our public meeting, probably maybe our work session, but we will figure it out, we will have Board Office Hours for one hour. So normally, we have executive session at 6:00, so we would have Board Hours from 5:00 to 6:00. Two Board members would be made available. We will work on a rotating basis. We'll let you know who's going to be there that month, and we will put it out, and if you're interested in meeting with us, you would be in touch with Lauren and make an appointment, and you can meet with us and let us know what it is that you have on your mind, maybe beforehand, only so that we could be prepared to talk about it. And it's just a way for you to maybe come to us, not at the public mic, but something that's maybe on your mind, you'd like to share with us, and something that we thought would be a good thing to try. What I'd like to do is kind of clean it up, what I just said, and then have Lauren put it out on a blackboard connect so that everyone could know what's going on, and, you know, much clearer than I just said it. And then everyone will know that we're doing this and that we've opened up Board Office Hours. So I just kind of informally, it's not a vote, but if the Board is in favor of doing that, what do you guys think?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes. Okay, we're going to go forward with that. I do also want to say that Dodge will be here. He is at, down at Cottle. It is open school night, and he has two student, two of his children are at Cottle, so he is down there. He will be back to join us shortly. So, okay, great. So Lauren, we'll work on that this week, and then we'll put something out to the public so everybody knows what we're doing with that. Okay, that's all for me. Yes, thank you, Carl.
I'll just make a few brief comments, then I'm doing a presentation in a few moments. But I'm very pleased to let the community know that this has been an incredibly smooth opening of school. Cynthia, I know the weeks have been short, and we needed, the community wants to know that we needed to start with two conference days. There are more and more mandated state requirements that a school district has to meet prior to the opening of school, prior to actually working with students. Some of those revolve around safety and security. There's a lot of curriculum initiatives. I do want to just thank Dr. Ellen McDonald for helping me coordinate the opening conference days. They were very rigorous. We welcomed our new teachers. We set up mentoring programs, again, a lot of required trainings, but then a lot of really good thoughtful work on curriculum, instruction, and various initiatives that the district is pursuing this year. By everyone's feedback, including teachers, administrators, you know, the two conference days were very, very positive, and the staff feels like they were supported in their beginning of the school year. Then I have to give a shout-out to our students, who were absolutely fabulous on the first, you know, several days of school. I visited each building multiple times. They right away hit the ground running, have been engaged in meaningful learning everywhere I look, everywhere I turn. So they seem settled in. The building is operating very smoothly. But I will jump over to traffic, and both Rob and Michelle commented on this. We are watching very carefully. You may be aware that I put out a communication on traffic, the building administrators put out a communication on traffic, but we also recognize that people are inundated with email information. Not everyone has the time to really read through them. We try to make them concise and give you the important information that you need. But I must say, we've been out there with Eastchester PD. We've also been working with the PTA's Health and Safety Committee to talk about traffic. The Board has been very, you know, concerned, and we've had many discussions about traffic safety. And going back to 2014, when we did our traffic study, we, what we learned is this is a very, very challenging community, school community, to work with. It's very rare that a school is set back in this residential neighborhood. It is a beautiful neighborhood, but it's really not the best place for a school, backed up by a country club, almost landlocked, and makes some, you know, it's very challenging for people to drop off and pick up. I will remind parents, and this probably doesn't need to be said, but everyone is entitled to transportation in Tuckahoe. That's not the case in every district, but we do offer that. Big reasoning behind that is we don't have sidewalks in Bronxville Manor. But it always would be best for people to take advantage of that wonderful service of bus, you know, bus transportation back and forth. However, we do respect that people sometimes do need to pick up their children and drop them off. Sometimes it's to take them to other activities, and if you're doing so, we just ask that you be very careful. If you see that bus with their, with their stop sign out, under no circumstances should you pass. And I've asked the Eastchester Police Department to issue tickets if you observe that. We cannot have a child at risk because a parent is in a rush, or anyone is in a rush. So Eastchester has been great. We are exploring some tweaks of our system. We have some ideas, again, what we're doing with our new elementary principal, particularly down at Cottle. Mr. Marash is coming in with a fresh set of eyes. He was up in Pleasantville. They had some traffic challenges up there, so he's gone through this. We're observing. Mr. Kilgallen is out there. The Eastchester PD is out there. We have parents that are giving us feedback. So we may make some tweaks, but we want to be thoughtful about that, and if we do, we will announce them and make sure we communicate them to our parents. We're always looking for ways to enhance it, but at this point, I think the system, for the most part, is working. It can be better, and we're working towards that. So we will keep you informed. That's all for now.
Thank you. Lee, anything from you?
I would just like, again, to thank our custodial staff, who did an incredible job getting the schools ready for opening. If you would have seen the difference between a week before school started and the first day of school, it was just an unbelievable amount of work that they pulled together to get the schools ready to open. So thank you to all the custodial staff for all the hard work that they did. Thanks.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, now, comments from the PTA? Yes?
Good evening, Board. Mr. Albano, Dr. McDonald. My name is Peggy Anfield. I am a member of the Executive PTA. I'm filling in for Tara Zegars, who is the current President of the PTA. She is down at the Back to School. So she asked me just to share a couple of the things that have been happening. Us, the PTA, very much like the school, has been off to a very quick start, so we have a couple of things that we would like to share with the community. I'm just going to read for up to Tara's notes, so I don't know that. The community already is on School B. Everybody should have received an email advising families to check their information for accuracy. We do ask that people update that regularly. That is the form of communication for the PTA. School B is the primary way we'll be communicating with the community. If you are not on School B already, we do ask that you email tuckahoeclassparents@gmail.com, or if you could probably ask a teacher or anybody you see in the school, we could easily get you that information. Signing up for School B is separate from becoming a PTA member. We encourage every member of our school community, from administrators to teachers to parents to staff, to join the PTA. The PTA is a nonprofit organization. Every dollar spent on membership goes directly to support that doesn't program the PTA do. Membership may also be done online through School B. So so far, the school has, the PTA has been involved with a successful kindergarten bus run, which occurred last week of August, as well as we hosted a welcome picnic for our kindergarten families. It was a wonderful way for new families to meet and to be welcomed into the school community. The PTA has also been busy setting up multiple enrichment programs, which is really awesome because we're starting as of next week, which is a great way to start the school year. PTA Dance is open to boys and girls from K through 12. Registration is on School B, another key reason why you want to be a part of School B. Classes are going to begin on, begin on October 1st. Curious on the Hudson, which was a program that we ran last year, which was incredibly successful, offers a variety of STEAM programs from coding to robotics to pedontology at Cottle School. Registration is now open. Classes begin September 24th. We hold registration on Saturday, but I believe there might be some classes still available. We are also sponsoring an Italian club, which teaches the Italian language and culture to students at Cottle. Registration required will be distributed shortly, and the classes are anticipated to start on October 16th. And lastly, one of the biggest fundraisers we have, and probably one of the most exciting ones, is the Halloween Party at Cottle, which will take place on October 29th. Invitations will be going home shortly through School B. And we are also going to be trying something different this year. We are also going to be selling tickets at Back to School Night. So please bring your forms and your cash, and you could buy tickets at Back to School Night. And then another push for Back to School Night is Back to School Night is tonight for K through 2, and next Monday at Back at Cottle, I'm sorry, for 3 to 5. And we do really encourage parents to go to Back to School Night. In the middle school, it is on 9:27, and then in the high school, it'll be on 9:20. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Peggy. Thank you for being here. Okay, I don't see anyone from the Tuckahoe School Foundation. Just, Rob, you have something?
Yes. On behalf of the Tuckahoe School Foundation, who have a few folks down at the Back to School Night as well, the main announcement is their annual fundraiser, which is their, their big fundraiser for the year, is scheduled for Friday, November 2nd, at Melino's at Lake Isle. It'll be Casino Night, like they've done in the past. This year, they will be honoring Angela Georgie and Joanne Ornstein, so they would love to see a great turnout. The funds that are earned at the foundation are offered to the teachers via grant program. So they annually raise money, and the teachers and administrators submit grants, where then the foundation will meet and offer money back to the teachers that gets put right to work for the students in our district. So come out and support the foundation, and if you're interested in becoming a member, you can visit one of the tables at any of the Back to School Nights that are upcoming on the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, this brings us now to the first recognition of the audience. This would be on agenda items only, and I don't see anyone here for that, unless Peggy, you wanted to say something? Yes? No? Okay. So we're going to move on now. Thank you. We're going to move now on to our presentations, and our Superintendent Carl Albano will be presenting his goals.
Second. We have a small audience, but we appreciate you all being here. So once a year at this time, I always present my goals, but my goals are really the district's goals. Nothing that I will present here is done by me alone. It can't happen without a team effort, Board support, as well as administration and faculty and staff support. But I think we have outlined four very important topics for us to move forward on. I worked collaboratively with the Board on developing these at our summer retreat session. I thank them for their input. And let me walk you through them, and then later I am going to recommend that the Board do formally approve them. They will be posted on our website for people to refer to. So the four areas that we think are very important this year for us to move forward on. Number one is the capital project planning. Number two is conducting a needs assessment. The last one was done back in 2012. After that needs assessment, we built a strategic plan based on what we learned from input from all constituents, and we had a lot of success with that procedure and that process, so we are repeating it. It is time. The third area is safety and security. I don't think I need to explain why that is something that is first and foremost, you know, for our district. And lastly, the fourth category is teaching and learning, and although the other three are important, we never can lose sight of the fact that our fundamental purpose here as a school district is education. So I will take you through each one with a brief overview and then just some specific timelines and specific goals. So first, the needs assessment. If you were paying attention at our last Board meeting, we approved Judy Wilson, who was the former superintendent of Princeton, New Jersey, school district. She retired, and she has been actively doing needs assessments and helping districts create strategic plans throughout the tri-state area. She's worked with some of the top schools in New Jersey, Connecticut, and New York area. In this area, people will recognize that Edgemont and Pelham are neighboring districts. Those names are very familiar, and of course, they're very high-performing districts as well. But basically, what we're planning to do is have Judy, I already had my first meeting with her, and it was a very good first meeting. I gave her a history of our district from my perspective, but she will not go by my perspective alone. She really will get out there and hear from everyone, all of our Board members, all of our administrators, our teaching staff, civil service staff, as well as parents and even students. So first, we are creating, in the process right now, of creating surveys that will be sent out to students, staff, and community members. When you do get these surveys, we will appreciate partnering with PTA and the foundation and other organizations to really encourage people to complete these surveys, to take the time, be thoughtful, give us that feedback. I think with all of us working together, we certainly can get a strong participation rate. Then Judy, with our staff, will be reviewing past school data, trends, and key issues that we're facing as a school district. The third area will be to coordinate interviews with school leadership. That will occur individually for each different department and school. And then finally, in November, we will also have Judy working with small focus groups. That, now, we haven't outlined each group, but certainly PTA would be one group, Foundation would be another group, of various other organizations that are important to our community. I think Dr. Wilson, back in the day, did about 18 focus group forums, so it would be something similar as I envisioned it. Part two of this first goal is then building on that needs assessment and what we learned, developing a strategic plan. Now, Peter said five years, and we did just complete a five-year strategic plan. What I think all of us learned from that process is that it's very difficult to project out five years, and some of Judy's work, sometimes she will create a five-year plan for the district, and it's really, you know, it's what we want as a district. It's not her choice. She's just facilitating this. But sometimes, a three-year plan makes more sense. So I don't want to rule out, I think it will be between three and five. No determination has been made. I think we have to see what works for us, because in our last process, about halfway through, we realized we needed to rethink our plans. Some, we far surpassed, others, we were behind on. So in our last plan, halfway through, we actually created an addendum and had to adjust many of the plans. So three years may make more sense. However, in the process of developing it, and this will go into January, she will be collaborating with a leadership planning team. Then we will develop action plans, timelines, and clear expectations for each area that we determine we'd like to have a strategic plan for. We will make sure we communicate this very clearly with the entire community. I believe, as last time, the Board will formally adopt a completed strategic plan, and we'll also delineate annual review and renewal process. So just creating a plan is not enough. Every year, we need to revisit and reassess how we are progressing towards the goals we establish. So that will be clearly outlined for the Board as well as the entire community. The second goal that I have this year, and this may not be a highly visible goal, but it's a very important one, and that is planning the district capital project. As most people know, we have nearly $10 million capital project plan approved by the community. We are in the planning phases. If you were paying attention over the summer, the Board approved a third-party review system, which is something new that New York State offered. That, I believe, will result in a plan approval probably within a month or so. Initially, we thought we would get approval in like December or January. That's, that's how backed up New York State is. But now, we believe we will have that shortly, which is fantastic, because then we can be very thoughtful about the planning process once we have approvals in place, and really be thorough about what we do, because come July 1st, 2019, this has to go off like clockwork. The bulk of the work will be done down at the Cottle School, and we are very much thinking that we will shut down the entire building for the summer of 2019. And we're looking at not only the second story being built, but also renovations with the original wing of Cottle, infrastructure work, this field work across from Cottle, and also the turf field will be replaced. To plan all this, I'll be working very closely with Ms. Liu, our business official. We will make sure that the Board of Education and community have updates on every phase of planning throughout this school year. Then there is a bidding process, which I anticipate will occur between January and March, and that has to be negotiated. Then after that, we will be awarding contracts and setting that up in March of 2019. And then the final plans for construction will occur by May. We will have a plan. Again, classrooms have to be moved. Teachers need early notification. We may take the Cottle administrative offices and temporarily house them up here for the summer. There's a lot of work that occurs in the summer, and we will be very busy, but if it's planned properly, I think this will go exceptionally well. Then the schedule from July through January, so although there'll be heavy work in the summer, most people who are paying attention to our former presentations know that the second story, the interior build-out, the plumbing, the electrical, the floors, the tile work, all of that will occur in September through December, possibly even January. Now, there is concrete on the roof of the new wing of Cottle, so there will be some noise and some sound, but we do think instruction certainly can move forward. We will have heavy communication between the project manager, the construction people, as well as our building administrator and the staff. If it gets too noisy, we certainly can make adjustments, but we really plan to forge ahead and get that new wing open by January of 2020. You've probably seen the latest designs, but this is what the Cottle new wing will look like. Right in the middle there, you see a new innovation space to promote science and STEAM at the elementary level. We have fantastic programs in the middle high school, but we definitely need a facility down at Cottle to, to support that initiative. This is what the inside of the innovation space will potentially look like. It'll be something very close to this. We're very excited about it. Dr. McDonald has been bringing her perspective from curriculum and instruction, and I think we may rename it. Ellen, help me. Innovation Space?
Somewhere.
Okay, all right. We've thrown around STEAM classroom. We've thrown around a few different ideas, but right now, we're leaning towards Innovation Space. It's very exciting. And then this is what the new Cottle main entrance will look like. You've seen this before, probably, but this has gone through a few different You've seen this before probably, but this has gone through a few different redesigns. We think this makes the most sense. It will be wheelchair accessible and much more secure. Most parents know, if you're an elementary parent, you know that for this year only, we relocated the main entrance to the entrance closer to Ridge Street. We believe that's safer. With the old entrance, people were entering, passing classrooms before they were cleared. And we thought, even though it was just for 10 months, we ought to relocate that for this school year, but then the main entrance will go back to where it originally was after construction. The next goal, safety and security. We spent a lot of time this past year discussing this more than ever before, but we need to continue to enhance safety and security throughout the district. We have a security consultant firm, Altaris Consulting. They have been fantastic. They did a comprehensive evaluation of our school's safety last year. It was completed around June. It is not for public consumption, because it really, really takes a close, in-depth look at security measures, and that is not something that we will make known publicly. However, know that it is in place, it is a comprehensive document. Altaris joined the administrative team over the summer at our retreat sessions. We had two days, one session on one day was spent with Altaris going through that evaluation. What we are going to do, there are long-term goals in that evaluation plan, and then there are short-term goals. We are in the process now of prioritizing them. The district safety committee will be meeting this Friday, and we will be looking at, but we haven't, we've already done trainings, all the staff had required training on one of the first conference days, and emergency response teams have been meeting with the Altaris consultants, preparing for emergency situations, and there will be a lot more training that follows throughout the year. That's, I kind of summarized these goals already, I'm sorry, the individual goals, but yeah, establishing the district-wide safety team, emergency response teams, working with the consultant, I covered that. Consultants and administrators, oh, the emergency plan, so New York State does require us to have emergency plans. There is a district plan that is posted on the website that is for public view. There are more detailed plans, very comprehensive plans for each building, and all different scenarios, how do we handle emergencies in different types of scenarios. That is not for the public, but those are being developed. They are submitted to New York State for approval. Altaris is working with us on finalizing them as we speak. They will be completed by the end of the month. Now, those were in place last year, but with Altaris, I think we even have stronger plans this year, and they are also shared with our local police and emergency responders. Also, every staff member, CSEA, teaching staff, administrative staff, every person who works in this district will have emergency response training during this school year, and also we will conduct emergency team training, including tabletop exercises and crisis The last goal, and certainly an important one, again, teaching and learning. We need to continue to promote academic culture, which clearly articulates curriculum expectations and attitudes that motivate students for higher levels of achievement. There is a lot of new information coming out of New York State. We refer to it as the next-generation learning standards, or New York State refers to it as that. So some of our curriculum initiatives will be state-driven, not completely. We do have a lot of decisions to make within the state guidance, but for example, there is a new mental health education program that needs to be implemented. We do a lot in this area. We revamped our middle and high school health curriculum. Over the past couple of years, we've added many units of study, and I think it's been enhanced tremendously. However, one of the goals in this year is to plan to do that from K through 12. So it starts at a very early age, at a much more basic level, but you know, social, emotional learning, mental health education is important for all children, and we will make sure it's developmentally appropriate. Also, next-generation learning standards in science are coming our way, and again, I think we're set up perfectly to embrace these standards, particularly with what we're going to have at the Cottle Elementary School. Again, I do believe that the programs in the middle high school are very solid, however, they will need to realign with these new standards. However, at Cottle, I think there's room for dramatic improvement, especially with the right facilities. There are new ELA standards coming down, and math. They were approved by New York State, but now we have to look at how they are integrated and how the work we're doing fits into what New York State is expecting of all public schools. So that work will occur, my estimate on time is the winter and into the spring. Next, next-generation standards for, I'm sorry, that is repetitive there, and I apologize, building capacity for them. That means training. We have Dr. McDonnell, you know, under her guidance, will be setting up professional development training, there will be in-house training, which has already started. We have, on Election Day, we have a conference day, we have another conference day late winter, but then we also have every week, either department meetings or extended-day faculty meetings, where on Wednesdays, our staff is working on curriculum initiatives, and there will be times where teachers are sent out, because they need to be out to get important information to make sure we align with the state's expectations. And lastly, we think it's going to be important to make sure parents understand the curriculum changes. And Dr. McDonnell and I have spoke about this, and she will be taking the lead as far as conducting parent training sessions, parent information sessions, so parents at home will be able to support their children in making this transition to the new learning standards. Are there any questions from the board or the audience? Okay, so we look forward to working on these projects. I'd like to now invite Ms. Liu up, who is going to share with you some of the summer work that was done, she just touched on it earlier.
Yes, so we were busy in Tuckahoe this summer doing renovations and asbestos edavement and classroom and office redesigns so that we could be ready for the fall. It's a busy time, and it is where, here, what I wanted to do is just give you some before-and-after photos of some of the work that we accomplished over the summer, just to give the board, as well as the community, an idea of what we were doing. We took a look at four classrooms over in Cottle that had asbestos tiles, and while asbestos tiles can be okay if they're in place and not disturbed, there were four classrooms where we felt that they really needed to come out and put in modern, regular floors, that would not be a health hazard in the future. So we called in our architects, who put together a plan that we submitted to the state. We waited for the state approval on that and worked with the architects to work within the guidelines to safely and effectively remedy that situation. So here's a picture of some classrooms where we had to completely empty them, and those are the tiles in advance of the renovation. Here we were taking out closet doors and reconfiguring sinks and various aspects of classrooms so that the spaces would be more usable to the teachers once the projects were completed. We took care, we took out all of the bookcases under the windows and the cabinetry so that we could make sure we would remediate properly underneath all the built-in things that might be able to be moved. Anything that wasn't able to be moved, we left in place, but many of the cabinets under the windows we took out, we repaired them and painted them before we reinstalled them after the project was completed. And so here's a picture of a before-and-after classroom. As you can see, on the left, that was the classroom with the old floors and the old cabinetry, and on the right is how it looked once the project was completed. The floors were completely removed and redone, the cabinets under the windows were renovated and repainted and replaced, the walls were painted. We bought new furniture for all, in this classroom, we replaced all the furniture. In all the other classrooms, we replaced all the classroom chairs, and we're starting to replace all the desks around the building. And wherever we, all the four classrooms that we worked on this summer, we painted, we installed air conditioning, if they didn't already have air conditioning, and we totally, pretty much reviewed and revamped all those classrooms. Here are some more pictures of some of the classrooms that we took, we worked on this summer. On the left is a different classroom, which still has the old desk, but we're still in very good shape. We're working on upgrading them to all the modern configurations, so slowly, as the teachers see what they are using and try them out, we'll determine what would make sense for classrooms in different grade levels. One of the other projects we did was to work on the new security entrance that Mr. Albano just discussed earlier up at Cottle. So at the upper wing, we already had a desk and a secondary entrance there, but what we did is we brought up all the technology so that we would have the ability to see people outside the building. What makes this area work very well is an entrance, is it has two sets of entrance doors. So we installed an intercom and a buzzer system so that parents and visitors could contact the person sitting at the desk each day. They could be buzzed through to the second set of doors and then state their business, and then buzz through to the final area to come into the building. One of the other projects was over at the middle school, high school. We took three small spaces over at Central Office, which actually are right behind the auditorium here. There were a file room, a small office, and a small conference room. We took down temporary walls that were in those spaces and made it into one long, but really usable strings classroom. That's Mr. Duchateau, who's our strings teacher. When I was over there this morning taking photographs, they wanted me, he was working with a student, and they wanted me to thank the board for their new classroom. They're finding it a huge improvement over the corner of the auditorium where they were last year. Really enjoying their new space. Also, in the middle school, we reconfigured offices so that we could accommodate more staff in our building. This is a picture of an area of a middle school guidance suite that we made into a guidance suite and our new middle school principal and his secretary's area. As you can see on the left, we cut a new door right through into that new space. It looks like it's always been there, it matches the rest of the building, but it provides a private entrance to the middle school administrative area, and that's his outer office as well. Through the door is his new inner office. We also wanted to create some space for our new director of special education, so we took the former special education office and reconfigured it, added a wall, so that we would have an area for the director of special education, and also recreated on the other side of that office, a conference room for the district, because we lost the conference room when we built the strings classroom. We also took a look at the library, which was sorely in need of an update, and we replaced all the carpeting, we painted, and we took care of some renovations in that area so that we can improve the space there. We're also looking at modernizing the furniture for 21st century learning, and those are some of the projects we'll be working on this year. And finally, one of the ways we will be determining what types of furniture and cabinetry we'll use throughout the building to support all our new initiatives for modern learning is what we have called, or what Ashley, Dr. McDonald, has named, the TYRRA, which is an acronym that she will go into more detail and tell you about in our workshop in October. But what we are seeing there is many different samples that manufacturers have provided to the district at no cost for teachers to try and look at and work with and see what might work in their classrooms, and for various different types of uses. And we still have more work planned for the rest of the year, we're not done. That is only what I showed you, that we did over the summer. What we'd like to do this year for the rest of the year, and we've already started getting quotes and getting some schedules in place to get this moving, is to finish air conditioning all the classrooms over at Cottle. We also will be painting classrooms district-wide through the district, through our calendar breaks throughout the year. We plan, as I said before, to work with building administrators and Dr. McDonald to purchase new classroom furniture at the middle school, high school, and at Cottle. That's it.
Thank you both, Carl and Lee. Let's start with Carl's presentation on the goals. Does anyone have any comments from the board, any questions there? We're familiar with them, we've gone over them a couple of times, but...
I have a quick question, though, not necessarily about the goal, the goals were great, Carl, but just on that last goal, but the teaching and learning, when you were talking about the next-generation standards. Just for clarification for myself, how does that line up with, I know there was a new state mandates that came out from the Every Student Succeeds Act. Is that coming from, is that sort of the same thing, or is it two different things?
Yes, yes. In fact, I see Dr. McDonnell, who is very current on all of this, so Ellen, do you want to come up to the mic and...
The state has come up with some timelines that are different. English and social studies, they have come up with timelines that they have announced when the new state test will hit, which is in 2021. The new science standards actually came out prior to the new English and math standards, and they have yet to set a timeline for when the new exams will hit, because they're actually moving the fourth-grade science assessment to fifth grade, and the eighth-grade assessment will be changing in that high school. So though they've laid out a phase, set of phase one, two, three, of how we should learn about the science standards, they have yet to land on which years each of those hits, so it's a little odd for us to try to implement training when we don't know exactly when the test will change, as to when we should start, you know, realigning. But ELA and math is a little more solid, the state can change their mind. But as of now, we are in what's called an exploratory year for ELA and math, learning about what the standards say, and we're supposed to be a year ahead of that in science, because we did that last year, to build capacity to more directed training. However, we don't know when that exam will be, so they're actually a little more similar this year in terms of our learning, because our kids will not see new assessments. We're going to, as Mr. Albano mentioned, going to do some nights for parents so they can see that ELA and math actually are not dramatic changes from what we've been doing, so we'll do a little this is then, you know, here's what's coming, so people can understand science as a little more adept to the change in terms of conceptual understanding and getting kids really more messing with science, as opposed to learning facts about science. So we've had some fun down at Cottle last year, and coming up with, well, what materials, what do we want to try out and see what might help us learn this new way of investigating science? That's where we are. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so the changes are not necessarily standard changes, they're what they are, but they're also changes to the content of the curriculum. Is that correct?
The state writes standards, which include the content and the processes through which they wish you to learn, yes. They ask local, you know, districts to adopt curriculum and materials for that, but they set standards that children will be assessed to that level of standard, yes.
Okay.
And those are the ones that are changing.
All right. And then also my understanding that this brings some new teacher and principal evaluation standards are coming to effect. Do you know anything about that, is that true?
There is talk about revisiting a PPR, so the current system that is in place, which is state law. The new commissioner is talking about making some changes in that area. In my superintendent's group, which met last week, we are part of that discussion, and let me just say, in both areas. So the curriculum changes, as well as professional evaluations, the difference with the current administration up at State Ed is they are listening feedback from educators. A criticism of the last big rollout under the previous commissioner was that it was too top-down, Peter. So for example, we've had a voice at the table, administration, teachers, college professors, parent groups, and our superintendent's group from Lower Westchester has a voice and a seat at the table, and they are listening to our input about APPR. Now, we like the classroom observation piece, however, we have major concerns about the other 50%, which is the calculation based on student performance. So that, I think, is where you may see the change. Right now, though, there are a lot of unknowns or decisions that have yet to be made, but we will keep you posted. Michelle said earlier, you know, Dr. McDonald and I spoke about more frequent and more current updates about curriculum instruction, academics, throughout the year. Last year, we were focused on the bond, well, throughout the early part of the year, but you will hear a lot more as we learn more.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a, I'm glad to hear you say that. I know that, you know, we've said that as a board over the last couple of years. I think we'd really like to celebrate more what's going on in the classroom with the children. I think, you know, as parents, we're all busy, so sometimes we may not be aware of exactly what the kids are doing in the class and how this cross-curriculum philosophy that you're using, teaching in different classrooms, the same approach to learning. I think those demonstrations were great last year, and I'm glad to hear you say that. We strongly encourage that. Would love to see the continued use of social media to let the public be aware of the types of things we're doing in the classroom. I think that's really good to hear, and we push you and encourage you to present that more than less.
We will. We're excited about it, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you. My only comment, number, I want to thank you, Carl. I think it's a very aggressive set of goals. It's a lot to do this year. We've got a lot going on. The needs assessment and the strategic planning in itself is a huge task to take on. I just had one more specific question about the capital project, and I think we talked about it before, but the security vestibule at Cottle, will we be able to start that sooner than June of 2019? And since now we are doing the entrance, we've moved it to the top of the hill, so will construction start on that earlier than June?
Good question, Michelle. Lee and I have met numerous times with the architects, and we've posed that question again with the anticipation of an early approval because of the third-party review. We would like to get started on that, or at least the excavation part of it, which would have to occur outside the building. The concern from Russ Davidson, from KG and the architects, is that that is a means of egress, and we may have to create another exit, okay? It's not the main entrance, but it is an exit, and we would probably have to create another exit, and then at that point, we should weigh the benefits versus the cost of doing that. So I'll get back to the board on that. Russ has not given us an answer, but I think we'll have one shortly.
Could we maybe, since we, I talked a little bit earlier about the agenda and the format of the agenda, maybe we could add the capital project on the agenda for every month? So then every month, we would have an update, and then, you know, whatever is new and what's ever happening, we give you and Lee an opportunity at, I don't know, wherever Lauren thinks is the appropriate place on the agenda to put that, but we'll put capital project updates so every month we'll hear what's happening and what's going on with that. I think that would be a good idea. Okay. And then anything else for Lee on all the summer work? I do have to let the public know that this board, I really think we were like really breathing down your neck all summer long about the, what were you called, the refurbishing of Cottle classrooms, the air conditioning. It was something that we were very, very set on trying to get as much done as possible. If you remember during the budget phase, we had allocated funds. The board was very much in support of putting additional funds into building and maintenance and capital improvements and to be getting as much of that done. We do know that time, you know, is of the essence over the summer, and we thank you for getting as much done as possible. Lee was not kidding when she said the transformation in literally a week's time because when the board did our tour a week before school opening, it did not look like we were going to make it. I have to say, I was just a little concerned. But really, our staff, our custodial staff did an amazing job, and so I want to thank you, Lee, for that. And really just also emphasize about the additional work that will be doing, will be getting done during the year. So anything that was not accomplished over this summer, and I just do have to kind of apologize, I'm sorry, Lee, because maybe I was like a GC in a private life or something. I don't know, but like, we were really on you, and, but it was just because we were showing that it was important to us, it was something that we had promised we would get done, and we just were kind of holding you to that. So thank you for all the efforts, and I think it was very clear what is still left to be done this year, and I think that was a very good, clear picture of what's been accomplished and what is still to be accomplished. And one thing I was thinking about was the library. I mean, are we going, is this our new place here for board meetings, or is this just temporary because of the library?
We were thinking that this would be temporary. We are replacing the air conditioning unit that needed to be replaced in the library. So with the heat that we've experienced recently, we didn't think it would be appropriate to have the meetings.
Okay. So we will be going back because we also did talk about updating the video equipment and then maybe possibly having our meetings here.
We'll have to rethink that now that we realize we may have to do some renovations in the auditorium as well over at Cottle, so we'll keep you posted on that throughout the year.
Very good. Okay. Anybody else? Anything for Lee?
Yeah, just a question. There was some discussion over the summer that we possibly would be putting a facilities committee together again this year.
Yes. Carl and I have talked about that, and especially recently with the architects because they also recommend that we reconvene a special facilities committee just to discuss things that need to be, things that have to be agreed upon or things that may have questions. So we should put another committee back together, a small one, just to review capital projects as well as ongoing projects.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so...
And if I could just add, you know, I, when the board was holding us accountable, and that is their role, I assured the board that Ms. Lou was working tirelessly. She barely took vacation time aside from a few days early in the year, early in the summer. But I think I should say it publicly because Lee, I think, has done an outstanding job. You know, we always try to do as much as possible, but the summer is a very short window, and she worked tirelessly, and I was here, you know, watching her every step of the way, and I really need to compliment her because these rooms turned out beautiful. And I know on back-to-school night, any area that was renovated will be noticed and appreciated by the parents, and we've gotten so much positive feedback from our students, which is probably the best place to hear positive feedback. So Lee, again, just publicly, thank you for your hard work over the summer.
Okay, great. Okay, so we will move on with the consent agenda. Approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. Is there anything there? I know, Rob, you had, at the last meeting, asked us to table the grant and...
Number seven, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, if I may, just thank you. My request at the last meeting, I asked for this to be tabled, just to get a little bit of a clearer understanding of how the Orange Osterbosse's would handle the imaging and what their processes, and then how do they secure that information? How do they protect it? There's a lot of sensitive information there, personal identifiable information that needs to be protected, especially in this day and age with all that's going on between cyber and security and things like that. And I did read through, it is available, it's attached to the agenda, and I'm fine. It's, they have a very, very thorough process and procedure, which I expected, but I did want to see it, and I think we have the right to see it. So I appreciate you getting that for me and for the board and letting us take a look at it, but I'm good with that, so thank you. My one other question, and I understand it, but I thought maybe beginning, you know, our new year here, maybe for those parents who are just moving into the district or starting, Lee, maybe you can just give them a quick explanation. There's two tax certs that are on the agenda. These are pretty significant, over $400,000 on two particular parcels. So maybe you could just explain how we treat that in the budget. I know we're going to get into that a lot more, but I thought they were on here and they're significant. Maybe an opportunity just to mention how we approach our tax certs.
Sure. For several years now, the board has been very prudent about taking any surplus funds that might be available at the end of a school year and putting them into various savings accounts for the district. The primary one would be for the tax serciari reserve. The district gets many, many tax serciari requests from corporations, from commercial properties that challenge their tax assessments, and when they do, they're reviewed by our attorneys and the town's attorneys and also by, given a court judgment. And if it's determined based on very many formulas and financial analyses that they are in fact due to, have been over assessed, they would be entitled to a tax refund. So rather than going out to the markets and bonding to pay back these taxes, what we do is we use our savings account to pay it back. So that saves the district having to go out to the market, increase their debt, and spend interest monies, and we have the monies available to reimburse them. So we've been doing it that way for now, and even these two large tax serciaries, we have sufficient funds to be able to reimburse them this year with that and still have a healthy reserve.
Thank you. I was actually, Rob, thank you for bringing that up. I was going to bring up the same point, having served on the budget, the audit and then Budget Committee as well as Rob, as Pete served on it last year. For lack of a better word, I mean, there's, sometimes has been a little bit of criticism for putting that money away for things, for this, for tax certs. And I just really think it's been such solid fiscal planning, and especially when we talk about going forward with capital improvement projects. The more debt we put on, the harder it will be for us to do the capital work we want to do. So it's really been very, I think, a successful plan. I want to thank you, Lee. I believe Jim Reese started this with the reserve a couple of years ago. It was his recommendation. Lee agreed with it and has continued to follow through with it. And just to make it a little easier to understand, in the past, something like this, $400,000, we would bond this. And when, basically what you're doing is you're just putting more debt onto the future, and when we want to now do capital improvements, there's still a lot of things we want to do. We're already talking about the next phase of where we're going to go in the future here. The cleaner our debt is going forward, the better our opportunity is to do more. So I applaud it. I think it's good planning. Nobody likes to have to approve these things, let's be honest, you know? It hurts.
And not to mention that a $400,000 bond is not $400,000, it's $100,000 plus the interest.
Exactly.
So this is a much better economic way to do it.
Okay. Okay, so motion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. Let's see, where are we now? Okay, business of the board. Number one is the second reading of a policy. This is on graduation requirements. We talked a little bit about this at our last meeting. This was, I believe, Lauren, was this a state mandated change on graduation?
I'm sorry?
The policy, is it a state, state change requirement?
Yeah, the mandate change. Do you want to think it went through Ellen's office?
Okay. Thank you, Ellen.
The state asks each district to come up with a graduation policy change that makes sure that students with disabilities who may stay with us for an extended time are allowed to participate in graduation at least once. And so we have done that always, but apparently not every district has. So they asked for policies to be changed to have that happen. So our policy does allow for children, if they so wish, and with their family's consultation, to participate in the graduation experience at the first time they can with the senior class they would have been with when they entered ninth grade, or in any other year after that if they choose to stay till '21, and they can choose which year that is. We don't force them to select.
Okay, great. Okay, so that, again, that's on our website for anyone who's interested in looking into that, and we will be voting on it at our next meeting. Number two, appoint committee members. Resolve to appoint the following to the 2018-19 Audit Finance Committee. Brian Bull, Maria Boyer, Robert Brandy, Darcy Garner, Stanley Shi, Harry Tucker, William Corinsey, Michelle Liscio, Robert Cypher. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion.
I just want to thank everyone for serving. This is a very important committee, and I'm sure it will be very, very productive under Lee's leadership. So again, thank you.
All in favor? Number three, appoint committee members. Resolve to approve the following members of the district-wide school safety committee. Eastchester Fire Chief Brian Tween, Tuckahoe Police Chief John Costanza, Eastchester Police Chief Timothy Bonsi, Eastchester Police Lieutenant Jeffrey Hunter, Board of Education Trustee Peter Casson, Board of Education President Michelle Liscio, PTA President Tara Zagers, PTA Past President Allison Halloran, Tuckahoe Union Free School District Assistant Superintendent for Business Lee Lu. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion.
Just that again, thank you to everyone who's willing to serve with us. It's a very important committee, and we have some very important decisions to make as we move forward.
Okay. I just wanted to ask Carl, I think we also said that we were going to put two teachers on that committee, is that...
Yes, we will add those names shortly. I don't have them as we speak, but...
Okay, but it will be open to the two?
Absolutely. I didn't want to hold it up, but we will have teacher reps on this committee as well.
Very good, okay. All in favor? Number four, accept a donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made in the amount of $1,400, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from the S&amp;P Global as directed by Sugata Sahar in the amount of $1,400. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion.
Just thank you to the Sahar family. This is a company match, and we appreciate the donation. It will be put to good use at the middle school.
All in favor? Dodge? Okay, thank you. It's hard to see this way.
I know, it's hard to see.
Number five, approve service agreements. Resolve to approve student service agreements A through C. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion. Okay, so this is what I had mentioned earlier, where there are three service agreements, and if there's anything that you wanted to mention out, you would let us know, but otherwise, it's kind of their standard service agreements that we have for, usually for IEPs and for students.
These are required by students' IEPs.
That are mandated, okay. All in favor? Number six, approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the independent contractor agreement with HMV Consultants for the 2018-19 school year in the amount not to exceed $3,500. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion.
I would just like to say, this is our consultant, he works with us on our food services program. He helped us put together our bid specs last year for the rebid of our program, and he plans to come in early this year to make sure that IR Mark is complying with the new contract.
That's good to hear, thank you. All in favor? Number seven, increase in allowance. Resolve to increase the not-to-exceed amount with ANA Maintenance Enterprises from $45,000 for the 2017-18 year school year to $47,500 for the 2017-18 school year. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion. Did you, Lee, just want to mention that because this was last year's?
Right, this was just, we realized after the school year ended that Anthony Russo had worked for us five additional days that we hadn't realized went over the allowance. But it is, the new allowance is comparable to what we had spent the previous year.
The previous year.
We just wanted to correct that.
Okay, no problem. All in favor? Okay, we'll move on to personnel. One is to accept personal recommendations. Resolve to accept the personal action items A through D as outlined below. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion. Again, this is a change to the agenda and where we've just outlined, and it's, again, this is all public on our agendas that are available online, and this is just A through D. So there's two resignations, there's stipends for extracurriculars, and there's coaching appointments, and then there are two, I believe, is it two, two increased teaching loads. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor? Number two, accept personnel appointments. Resolve to approve Personnel Action Item E as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? I should just note that that was for a new nurse at William E. Cottle.
Yes, let's welcome Fiona Smith. We did have a very late summer resignation that we needed to fill. Austin Goldberg, John Marash, Pico Gallin worked hard to find a very competent person. We welcome her, and with this approval, she can start tomorrow. We're happy to have her here.
Great. Number three is to adopt goals. Resolve to adopt the 2018-19 goals of the Su... Resolve to adopt the 2018-19 goals of the Superintendent of Schools as outlined in the documents below and attach to the official minutes of this meeting. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion. I think we all discussed.
Yeah, we discussed it already.
All in favor? Okay, that now brings us to the second recognition of the audience. I'm guessing that nobody's here. Okay, so we are not, I'm not going to adjourn the meeting because we are going to go back for a brief executive session. Something else that we are talking about changing, and we will probably make an announcement about that at our next meeting, where we might be adding a second meeting for our executive sessions, and we're going to figure all that out, but we will announce that at our next meeting. That's it. Okay, thank you.